Good evening, everybody. At 6 o'clock, I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the invocation led by Vice Member Roberto, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember Fugit. Please rise if you're able.
Stir our thoughts and our minds tonight as together we commit to building and strengthening our community. Lift up our hearts so we may be driven by the best of our nature. Lead us to grow the loving spirit of understanding and compassion among us. Comfort those in need with your healing touch. Lead those who are hungry to nourishment. Grant us wisdom and patience in our deliberations tonight so that our actions may be worthy of your continued blessings. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilman Fugit?
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie?
Here.
Councilwoman Parker?
Here.
Councilwoman Ryder?
Here.
Vice Mayor Roberto?
Here.
Councilwoman Singh?
Here.
Councilwoman Smith?
Here.
Councilwoman Testerman?
Here.
And Councilwoman Thomas?
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there a motion on the minutes from last meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are there any items on tonight's agenda to be withdrawn? Are there any items to be postponed? Is there, are there any items requested to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent items?
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next is my mayor's report. I want to start off by thanking everyone who was involved in the successful Youth Violence Prevention Week last week. There were countless organizations, nonprofits, and many volunteers who helped make that week a big success. I want to give a special kudos to Le Kenya Middlebrook. Thank you. Mustafa Ali Smith and Emily Norris, part of the Office of Community Safety and Empowerment, who helped coordinate a lot of those events. There were more than two dozen planned events, including a huge turnout for Saturday's kickball tournament, which was held at the UT practice field. So, we had beautiful weather and a great turnout and a lot of kids who felt supported. And that was really, really happy to have such a good event. So, thank you to everyone. Tomorrow, I want to remind councilmembers that we are cutting the ribbon on Caswell Manor tomorrow morning. We, as you know, contributed $1.4 million to support Caswell Manor, which is a volunteer ministry center's second permanent supportive housing community. And, as we all have well know, that permanent supportive housing is critical. It provides safety, stability, support services, and workforce reentry training for people who are working to get back on their feet after experiencing chronic homelessness, sometimes for many, many years. Many residents have already moved in earlier this year, but it's not till tomorrow that we've been able to celebrate the ribbon cutting. So, it's going to be tomorrow, 11:00 a.m. at 1501 East Fifth Avenue. You're all invited. Also tomorrow, we're kicking off the 20th season of the farmer's market on Market Square. I can't believe it's been 20 years. I remember when it first got started, it was a sort of a fledgling thing with, you know, sometimes the markets were, had a lot of things to buy and sometimes not so many, but it's certainly thriving now. And I know that we are regular customers, as I'm sure, you know, thousands of Knoxville residents are. So, come out, enjoy all the local vendors. And a big thanks to a small group of volunteers who had a vision for this market 20 years ago, and to Nourish Knoxville, who helped grow the market into what it is today. This is a huge asset to our city. It's been fun to watch it evolve over the last two decades. So, that's tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. And then, short distance away, 11:00 a.m. is the Caswell Manor ribbon cutting. Finally, a quick reminder about the rules of decorum. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum should sign up with our city recorder, Mr. Johnson, ahead of time. Please do not use profanity. And when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Those who fail to adhere to those rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note, you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience; those who do may be asked to leave. Appreciate it in advance, everyone's respect for these rules. And that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports from councilmembers? Vice Member Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to give out a reminder that council will hold our legislative budget hearings on Tuesday, May 9th, starting at 8:00 a.m. here in the main assembly room in the City County Building. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, we just had a very successful Rosini Festival in town. And there was one person that was missing, that was Brandon Gibson. He was a very talented opera singer and a true talent in this town. And I just wanted to note his passing of natural causes earlier this year. Also, he was a writer, and some of his work is being published in the weekly Blank, the newspaper on the stand. So, if you want to check out some of Brandon's work, it's there. We will miss him. He was a real, real pillar in the opera and in the art community in Knoxville.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. KTA Board met last week. I want to give my colleagues an update on CAT Reimagine. As a refresher, the Board voted last year to increase frequency in the network and published a draft with the help of a consultant to increase frequency in a 45-minute network. In the resulting draft, some stats are 16% more access to jobs, 20% more access to jobs for those of low income, 22% access to jobs for those without a car. Residents of color have access to 24% more jobs, 23% more jobs within 15 minutes of a ride, and Sunday service that would match current Saturday service. So, a lot of improvements in the draft network. Still, there were multiple public meetings where some issues are still unresolved. So, we're working to resolve those. The staff is looking at three or four priorities. One is access at Broadway Towers, Route 23 reduction, service to the O'Connor Senior Center, Route 90 reduction, and paratransit and microtransit opportunities. So, CAT staff has gone back to the consultant for draft version two to address these gaps specifically, and will bring that second version of a draft network either to the May or June meeting. So, I just wanted to give you all an update on where we started, where we are, and where we still have room to improve. So, look for an announcement for the May or June meeting for an updated draft, and we'll do another round of public input, much like we have throughout the whole CAT reimagine process. The Board has all agreed on one thing particularly, and that is that we will take as long as we need to to get it right. So, May or June will be the new draft meeting, or the new draft network for CAT reimagine for the public to see. So, you're welcome to join.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Any other reports from councilmembers? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item eight.
Eight A is a resolution confirming the appointment of Deputy Chief David Powell to the Knoxville Animal Control Board.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eight B is a resolution confirming the appointment of Ashley Wells Ajinka and Hillary Brooks to the Mayor's Council on Disability Issues for the remainder of the current fiscal year.
Move to approve. Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine A is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Chapter 2, Article 1, to revise the oath of office of the Commissioners of Metropolitan Knoxville Airport Authority.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Nine B is an ordinance to change the base zoning of property located at 7700 Piner Drive from RN1 District to RN2 District. T. Dean LaRue applicant, 2nd District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven A is a resolution recognizing the centennial anniversary of the Knoxville Garden Club and celebrating the community involvement of members of the Knoxville Garden Club over these 100 years.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Is anyone here this evening from the garden club? Thank you for being here. Vice Member Roberto?
Thank you, Mayor. Just some housekeeping to begin with. I need to make a motion to make a slight amendment here. I'm going to move to amend the resolution by inserting a new section that would read, "The city recorder is directed to prepare an appropriate copy of this resolution for presentation with this final clause admitted from such copy." That way, we can hand them a copy without that language in it. So, I make that motion.
Second. Motion to amend, as Vice Member Roberto described, has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Okay, let's vote on the amendment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Vice Member Roberto?
Thank you.
Back to the original motion.
Thank you, Mayor. The Knoxville Garden Club has been serving and beautifying our community for 100 years. Members have generously volunteered their time and skills to a variety of efforts, including at Blunt Mansion, the Great Smokies National Park Association, Imes Nature Center, Knoxville Botanical Gardens, Knoxville Museum of Art, Lakeshore Park, Legacy Park, McClung History Collection, University of Tennessee Gardens, and I could keep going, but we'll be here all night. And at this time, what I wanted to do is just welcome, I believe Ashley Stamper is here.
If you wouldn't mind coming to the podium, just so we can see you. I think you're there, but I can't see you. Thank you so much. If you could just come to the podium and maybe just state your name, introduce yourselves for the record. You don't have to give a speech or anything, just since you took the time to come here, if you could just state your name.
Hi, I'm Stacy Wilson, and I'm president of the Knoxville Garden Club, effective tomorrow.
I'm Ashley Stamper, president-elect, effective tomorrow, and thank you all so much. We so appreciate it.
Thank you all. And we all have a, we have a presentation to give you after we vote. So, anyway, thank you for being here.
Thank you for being here, and thank you so much for all the work you and your club do to educate people and to beautify our city. We're very grateful. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We can...
Council, if you don't mind, I'll just take a minute to bring this, bring this to them.
Eleven B is a resolution authorizing the Industrial Development Board of the City of Knoxville to negotiate and accept from Blue Dog Capital Partners, LLC, for or an affiliate thereof, payments in lieu of adverbal or taxes with respect to certain real property located at 200 West Fifth Avenue, parcel ID number 094ED007 Knoxville, Tennessee, and finding that such payments are deemed to be in the furtherance of the public purposes of the Board as defined in Tennessee Code annotated Section 7-53-305.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. Question, is there a, I did not see it in our packet, but a but-for analysis for this project?
Indeed, there. Rebecca Jane Justice, I saw that, there's, yeah. You could come up and respond to this question, please.
Hello, yes, there is, there should have been a but-for analysis, the MUNICAP report in your packet. If there wasn't, we can certainly send that to you afterwards.
Yeah.
If you had a specific question, I have it here in front of me. We can...
I mean, if you can point it out, what page is on that would be?
Page 53? Is that what? Yeah. Page 53.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ms. Justice, perhaps you could just give us the takeaways. They did the analysis and they said but-for?
Yes, so, so this project is a really unique infill opportunity for a vacant site in our downtown on West Fifth. It is 144 total residential units that include workforce, live-work, and market-rate housing opportunities, as well as retail and parking. This is a 10-year pilot with a three-year construction period, and the estimated annual rate of return with the pilot is 9.1.
Okay, so, on page 62, it says, "MUNICAP's scope of work does not include an analysis of qualitative considerations as to whether the project would proceed without public assistance. MUNICAP believes that qualitative factors should be contemplated in a full but-for analysis." I was wondering if there's a full but-for analysis.
KCDC, are you?
Yeah, so, in this limited analysis, I think the way I would think about it is, the city has a pretty robust process on the front end that's more qualitative, so it really speaks to some of the development priorities that are listed on the front page, and it's sort of a, you know, up-down of, do we as a city support this type of effort? And then, if we were hiring an external party to come in and, you know, tell us as a city, inform us what, from a qualitative perspective, would be a good way to go, then we might undertake that. But the process that we've created is locally, what are the development priorities for a project like this? And then, MUNICAP comes as more of a financial review. So, in this case, they're, they're looking specifically at, with a pilot, the return is 9.1%. Without a pilot, the return is 7.4%.
So, just to summarize what you stated, we do an informal analysis internally. Are we looking at whether this project would move forward but for the public assistance being provided?
Yes, absolutely. I think the qualitative factors, and it's a little bit of a, it's unusual wording, but they're getting at the things that can't be, that's an "I," hate it when I make an obvious statement, the things that can't be quantified. And so, yes, we do Part One internally as more of those qualitative factors analysis. Then we move on, and MUNICAP helps us with the true financial but-for. Does that make sense?
Do you all put that analysis in writing?
Yeah, so, that, that analysis is, as the mayor stated, it starts on page, did you say 54 is, so it is, oh, you mean the qualitative piece?
She means the qualitative.
So, the qualitative piece, if you look, and there are actually, some of the bulleted points from that are mentioned in the background, just the very beginning page of this item, page 41. So, you can see the expansion of permanent housing supply, the workforce housing units, so there's 14 workforce housing units within this project. There's a few other items. Obviously, that was a very underutilized piece of property near a transit line. So, there's a lot of those qualitative factors that we look at.
But, I guess part of my concern was the analysis, and not necessarily this one, but, and I believe this has come up in discussion before, outside of the quantitative analysis that says the developer needs to make, you know, 10% return rather than 7%, it's just whether these projects would actually move forward. It might be, it might look a little bit differently, but, you know, would we still see the redevelopment of this underutilized parcel under this current market is what I'm questioning.
Ms. Parker, there's some other people with lights on, so I'll go on. If you have an answer to that question, then I'll go on to the next question.
I'll take a stab, and I'll lead with a terrible straddling of the fence here. We, we don't know, but we're very confident the 14 workforce housing units would not be included otherwise. So, that is a, we're certain there. In terms of the return, the return that they are, 7.4% is probably not going to get the project done, but we don't know their capital needs. Each project's are a little different, so it might happen.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder, and then Councilmember Smith.
Okay, I have a question, and then I want to throw back out and resummarize what you just said, Mr. Bentley. So, the project might move forward without the pilot, but it might not include workforce housing.
That's correct. And I would say that definitely would not include the workforce housing.
So, that's the part that we negotiated, and that is, what are the total number of units?
The total number of units is 144.
120. Okay, the other thing that, I have a parking question specifically, but the other thing that's interesting in this is, I see in here in the sheet, average monthly rent per live-work unit? Tell me what a live-work unit is, because I don't think we've seen one specifically with that before.
Right, so, this, this is also part of what we are able to negotiate into this deal, is by proposal of the developer, these types of live-work units where there may be a small office space included in the works, in the work, in the residential space that has a storefront, or a maker space, or a jewelry shop, or somewhere where they can have meetings or sell their goods by right of the zoning, that's also incorporated into their residential space.
So, that would be like the ground floor units?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that is fascinating. I have a question about parking.
Okay.
So, someone asked me if bike lanes were being requested to be removed to accommodate parking, and I hope the answer to that is no.
The answer is no, and we are...
Okay, thank you.
Right, we are working to, we are working with engineering and the developer to adjust the right-of-way cross-section to still have bike lanes, parallel parking, and two lanes of traffic.
Okay, and I just want to state out loud why that should be a hard no. We, I'm happy to hope that that was never a consideration. We've had other businesses in the community that have asked for bike lanes to be removed so that they could have the parking, and the answer to them was no, no matter how much they begged and pleaded, because people were using those bike lanes, and that's a commitment that we have as a city. So, I don't want to start on that slippery slope to gain housing. So, that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank Mr. Bentley, Ms. Justice, and Mr. Brace, whoever made sure these four bullets are in here, thank you, because I think it helps round out the conversation for while we would accept this pilot. I think there, is it fair to say in the past, there was a qualitative narrative that we didn't have specific 13 redevelopment priorities? So, MUNICAP would have taken a look and given their best argument or for against why we need this. And over the past few months, I guess more than a year, we've established 13 priorities for redevelopment, and now that qualitative work is done by us on the front end and stated as such in there. Is that, am I following all the right dots, connect all the dots?
You're following, yes, and that is correct, Councilwoman Smith. We have a process that is, is new to the city where we have a multi-step application process where we begin those initial conversations with the developer to, to guide the project to fulfill those key, as many of those key development priorities as possible.
It would also be directionally correct to say, you know, 10 years ago, pilots may have been but-fored for the deal-to-work period. Now, it seems like it's not only that, it's also, meaning but-for this, we wouldn't get workforce housing, but-for this, we wouldn't get public parking garages, not instead of bike lanes, but public parking in general. Is that a fair assessment of the evolution of pilots?
There are a lot of other facets and parameters that we're able to include in the negotiation of coming to a, a deal in a, in a project, yes.
But generally speaking, it's now for pilots, it's not just that the deal is possible, it's also, we're asking for you to contribute in certain other ways that align with whatever the need is for that particular property.
For sure.
Okay.
The, the way we frame that, Councilman Smith, is it's but-for plus these other public benefits.
Yeah.
So, it's the but-for, the deal, plus what are the other public benefits and those priorities?
Yeah, more eloquently. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Smith, for articulating that. And just for, for people who may not be aware, who might be watching in the audience, you can see these clearly articulated public benefits by just going to City of Knoxville Public Private Partnership Opportunities, Google that, it all comes up. And it's our way of letting potential developers know, what are we looking for? If you are applying to get a tax incentive, it's not just helping you to develop a project, and that's it, just to make your returns better, it's to meet these public benefits. And those are clearly stated in a way they hadn't been before. So, thank you to Ms. Justice and your team for, for getting that, getting that on the website. I think it's really, really well done. Appreciate it. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for the discussion. Reason I wanted to raise it, and it kind of feels like it's been echoed, is that the public benefit I see here is the workforce housing. But the other items, I worry if, really, this were strictly how we were applying or making the analysis, a lot of developments would fit into this category, just essentially anyone who, you know, commits to a development, if it's a mixed-use development, if it's, you know, located in a walkable area, it sounds like they're going to get a tax incentive, whether it's really needed or not. And so, I, I will just keep emphasizing that we have to see workforce housing as, included as a part of these projects. And I wanted to ask about, also about parking and the rationale for the 40 spaces, especially hearing more detail about the live-work spaces, and that there is anticipation that those spaces will entertain folks, you know, from the public.
There are 40, per zoning, there, parking is not required for this development, so we do see it as a positive that there are 40 spaces included on the part, on the private parcel. But it's also, as Councilwoman Ryder pointed out, important for us to integrate this development into the streetscape with transportation corridors, sidewalks, bike lanes, and parallel parking. But we have an agreement with TDOT under the bridge where we have public parking, and we're looking into extending the ingress and egress of that parking lot, so shared parking can be utilized for the whole area to support not only the local businesses, but the businesses in this development as well.
Thank you. Council, I just wanted to add that as someone who's lived and walked and biked in this immediate vicinity for over 20 years now, and, and it's been not a heavily utilized space, not a very active space, I'm really excited about this project. It's redevelopment, it's going to activate a part of the neighborhood that, you know, hasn't seen much activation in over 20 years. So, I'm really pleased, and I hope you'll move forward with a positive vote tonight. Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Parker, your light's on? Okay. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Rogers Group Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $5,495,384.50 for the 2023 Resurfacing Phase Two project.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Two Sisters Ventures Incorporated DB Apicus Hive to provide professional budget and accounting services to the city's finance department for various important projects in an amount not to exceed $130,000 with two optional one-year extensions.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven E is a resolution authorizing the submission of the 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan to the Five-Year Consolidated Plan for Housing and Community Development to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, and authorizing the mayor to execute any required documents under the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnerships Act, and Emergency Solutions Grant Programs.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Eleven F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute all documents necessary to apply for and accept a...
to apply for and accept a school violence prevention program grant from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services in a joint amount not to exceed $500,000 for both the city and Knox County schools. The city's portion not to exceed $175,000 with a 25% match not to exceed $43,750 to be used for equipment supplies, speaker fees, travel and training for school violence prevention at Knox County schools.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmember Ryder.
Yeah, have we gotten this grant before, have we applied for it before?
I'm pretty sure we apply and get it every year. Chief Noel?
Yes, this is a recurring grant we get every year. We use it for training for our school resource officers.
Okay, and we do it in partnership with the schools. All right, thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Councilmember Parker.
Well, just quickly, since we're discussing, any reasoning behind the, who's taking the lead on this grant?
I think it's one of those Department of Justice grants that has to go to cities that we are passing through the dollars to the schools, but Chief Noel?
The way the grant is set up, it's much easier for us to be able to apply for it and then pass the majority of the money over to Knox County schools.
And last year, the schools took the lead on this grant, and it was?
Correct.
Convoluted.
Correct.
Any, Councilmember Smith?
I just wanted to ask if this is only for high schools?
Well, for us, we only have SROs in high schools and one middle school, but Knox County schools could use this money for school security for any school. They could use it as they see fit.
But we only plan to use it for highs?
I mean, right now, we have SROs only in high schools and we have it in one middle school.
So only for high schools, or for that one middle school as well?
For our school resource, it's for training just for our SROs. That's how we use the small portion of our money is to train our school resource officers.
In all high schools and the one middle school?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Every school resource officer we have, yes.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant award of $250,000 with no required local match from the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Community Oriented Policing Services to be used for technology, instruction, and equipment for de-escalation, implicit bias, and duty to intervene training for the Knoxville Police Department officers.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any documents necessary to apply for and accept a grant award of $300,000 with no required local match from the International Association of Chiefs of Police to be used to fund a law enforcement victim advocate under the KPD Drug Death Task Force.
Motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmember Parker.
Thank you, Mayor. This is grant funding to add a position to KPD, but it seems like only for a limited amount of time or for as long as this grant will pay for. Am I reading that correctly, or is there?
That is, that is correct, CFO Boysevens. That is, the money's there only for that person for the amount of time of the grant. After that, if we weren't wanting to keep it, then we'd have to increase the budget authorized headcount. So it's only while the grant lasts.
That's all I have, thank you.
Councilmember Testerman?
Thank you. I was just curious.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like your mic's working. Maybe borrow?
I was just curious on that $300,000, is that strictly for salary over two years, or are there other allocations for those dollars?
We could, but the $300,000 is just for salaries for an employee that we would hire.
So for a two-year period, so?
We wouldn't be paying somebody that much, obviously, that's what the total amount of the grant awarded.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, will this be a full-time position?
Yes, ma'am, it would be.
Okay.
This is very similar, so right now, we have a victims advocate that works with our homicide unit, so they work with survivors of homicide. This would be almost identical to that, except they would be working with members of our drug overdose task force, working with the survivors of those victims, as long as we have this grant.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no further questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12A is an ordinance making and fixing the annual appropriations for the several departments, agencies, and funds of the City of Knoxville for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024, and providing the authority to reappropriate non-project-related encumbrances at the end of fiscal year 2022, 2023, into fiscal year 2023, 2024.
Move to approve. Motion made to approve and seconded, Councilmembers, there's two members of the public who have signed up to speak on this item. First is Moira Connolly. If you could state your name and address for the record, and then you'll have up to five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Moira Connolly. I live at 5726 South Briscoe Circle. I'm a constituent of Councilmember Thomas. I'm here today representing a group of people that you all have heard from before, who have been advocating for almost three years for an alternative response team in the City of Knoxville. As you may recall, an alternative response team pairs a nurse or medic with a behavioral health professional to respond to mental health and non-violent incidents in the community. Knoxville deserves a commitment to creating an alternative response team, but that commitment is not currently reflected in the proposed budget. We think it should be. Alternative response teams are used across the country, San Francisco, Los Angeles, Austin, Eugene, Oregon, Chicago, Denver, and most recently, San Rafael, California. In fact, many health, mental health professionals consider an alternative response team as a best practice. Interestingly, other local professionals also consider alternative response teams to be a best practice. Recently, the University of Tennessee Law School held a public panel discussion on alternatives to policing. The panelists included Chief Noel, Ms. Middlebrook, a UT professor on sociology, and our community member, Ms. Infome, who works with Community Defense of East Tennessee. When all those panelists were asked about the number-one thing that could be done to improve public safety, an alternative response team was affirmed by all four members of the panel as essentially the number-one thing outside of the police force that could be done to improve public safety in any community. And those four panelists had a very divergent point of view on many other questions that were asked. But when they were asked about the single thing that they would recommend to any community, the consensus among all four of them was an alternative response team. In May of 2021, almost exactly two years ago, I spoke to city council on this topic, as I say, we've been working on this for almost three years. At that time, I asked this question. Will it take a tragedy before we realize that Knoxville needs an alternative response team? Unfortunately and horribly, that tragedy has occurred. In that incident, video showed police responding to a situation at a hospital that did not need a police response. The city had no other way for anyone to respond to that situation because we do not have an alternative response team. I want to acknowledge that our group has had conversations with city officials about alternative response for almost three years. At the end of all those conversations, the takeaway that we understood was that we, a group of community volunteers, should go figure out how to do alternative response in Knoxville and come back to the city when we got it all figured out. That's not collaboration, and it's certainly not leadership. This year's budget proposes a reorganization of the Office of Empowerment and the Office of Public Safety. As that reorganization progresses, we believe that the new entity should be tasked with finding a way to facilitate an alternative response program for Knoxville. That may mean helping to create a community-based nonprofit to run the program or creating a program within the city structure. Both models are used across the country. Even as, tonight, city council is being asked to approve funding requests to federal agencies such as the U.S. Justice Department and the Housing and Urban Development for worthwhile violence prevention programs, city council has never been asked to approve such funding requests for an alternative response team. That money has been there, it's been sitting there in the federal government, and the city has never asked for it because we've never looked for it. The city administration needs to make a public commitment to create an alternative response team. Specifically, we ask that city council refrain from approving this budget unless part of the mandate of any reorganization of public safety offices includes a mandate to facilitate the creation of an alternative response team. The city's public safety infrastructure deserves evidence-based best practices, and the consensus is that an alternative response team meets that goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person who signed up to speak on item 12A is Rick Roach. Mr. Roach, if you'd please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address counsel.
Rick Roach, Knoxville. This budget process, we've had three years of it. We've watched things get pushed through. Same old, same old. We don't have any way for the citizens of Knoxville, for the people of Knoxville, to have direct input into this process and to actually state what the real priorities should be. We've been through this over and over and over again. So we have people right now, right up the block, who are suffering. It's not hard to see, it's not hard to tell what's going on, but we've been doing this whole process of same old, same old. And if we haven't figured out that it's not working, then that means that a change needs to be made in how we... Bottom line is, the budget is a moral statement. It's about what you actually believe is important and who is important. I was raised to respond to what a need was, what people's needs were. So when you see people in need and you see people in pain, you figure out how to alleviate that situation as best you can with the resources that you have. And the City of Knoxville has not done that. At least, it feels like there's nothing really happening here that will say, okay, we've got this opportunity to take care of this, to take care of people out on the street, to take, to make sure we have affordable housing. The resources are there. So the question is, are the priorities there? Do you all actually believe it's a priority? If you don't, say it. Baseball stadium, that was a priority. Okay? Bottom line, and we've gone through multiple scenarios now where the characterization of getting all that in that area, I mean, we've had this representation of the history behind it, what's actually happened, the people who have been negatively affected and are still being negatively affected, that type of thing, we can't continue to have. We, I know you guys lay your plans out, and when I say you guys, you all come in and fill in a position, and there you go, you keep pushing the plan, whatever the plan was 30 years ago, 20 years ago. You guys are just pieces to put in and carry out the plan. And the only person that's going to benefit are those who already have. That's the bottom line. And we've got to break this cycle. If we don't, you're going to have just a group of haves and a group of have-nots. In fact, I think we're already there. So I don't know what else to tell you to do, except search your souls. I said to you, Mayor, several years ago, city council meeting, I watched you act up. It was a Zoom meeting, you acted up, you were rude to Councilwoman Park, Councilwoman Parker. Outright rude. And I spoke to you guys, I said, you know, you need to have a change of heart, a change of mind. Otherwise, you know, there's going to be a situation. I got 35 seconds. You, chief, you gotta, you gotta wake up. And I'm saying that respectfully, okay? Knoxville's not New Orleans. Man. I'm frustrated, and a lot of people are frustrated. Y'all need to know this, y'all really need to know this. A lot of people are frustrated, and we don't know what else to do and say to you. We don't know, okay? We can't get the truth from you, you know? We asked for transparency, you said you were going to give us transparency, and what did you give us in the search process? Nothing, so that's it, my time's up.
Thank you, Councilmembers, that concludes people who signed up to speak on this item of the agenda. I wanted to first thank all of you for attending the State of the City last week where I gave the broad highlights of the budget proposal that's before you this evening. As Vice Mayor Roberto mentioned at the top of the meeting, we're ready to have a full hearing. The legislative hearings are scheduled for all day next Tuesday, and so we will be ready to take any and all questions at that time. Also, my deputies, Erin Gill and David Brace, have reached out to each of you by email to invite you to set up meetings to go in detail with them either before Tuesday or after Tuesday, before the second reading of this item. So I just wanted to thank you for attending the State of the City and participating in that. Also, Ms. Gill, if you could just take a minute to sort of, the alternative response is an issue that has come up, that's something that we have worked to try to address and consider. So if you could just speak to the process we've followed so far on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, Erin Gill, Deputy to American Canon. And yes, I think, Council, you've actually had a workshop on this, if you recall, back in June of 2021. And the action steps that the city staff recommended at that time in partnership with McNAB, who of course is the core staff support for our co-responder program, was to fund and complete the sequential intercept mapping process, which informs where there are gaps in the existing system and what resources exist. And so that process was completed last year. And alternative response, while it was considered one of the considerations of that workshop, very specifically, it did not emerge as one of the top recommendations in light of that, as well as some of the ongoing priorities that we have related to standing up the new Violence Interception Program and knowing funding constraints as well. This budget does not include funding for alternative response, but it does include the continued funding for, of course, community safety initiatives, including Turn Up Knox, and, you know, continued discussion and the ability to continue to explore the types of programs that can not only serve the community, but also help the police department focus on core law enforcement actions that they need to prioritize.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question, but I'm also needing to respond to what was just shared, and I'm not prepared enough to respond to it, but I remember that conversation and it, about the sequential intercept mapping. And essentially, that's, you know, how to ensure those in our community struggling with mental health are not coming into contact with the justice system unnecessarily. And so I remember at the time arguing that the best way to ensure that is an alternative response model that doesn't use police in the response. So I'm still confused, and I would love to get the city's report or analysis that came out of that sequential intercept mapping process, because how it does not lead us to alternative response when the... alternative response when the point of it is supposed to be to keep folks with mental health challenges out of the criminal justice system, when there is no need, you know, when they, they have not committed a criminal act but are simply, we're, we're just relying on a criminal justice system because we don't have other tools. So I continue to support alternative response, and, and I hope that we as a city will actually do our due diligence around this and, and put some thoughtful consideration into what this could do for our city, because I think it's desperately needed. In terms of the budget, one question I had was looking at the, looking through it, I, 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 and, you know, I compare it to older budgets because that's what helps me see things. I did not see reserves budgeted in here. So I wanted to ask, where do we find our reserves in this budget?
Mr. Evans.
The proposed budget is a balanced budget, and there is no unassigned fund balance that needs to be appropriated for it. That's why you don't see any mention of it.
Wait, what? There's no unassigned fund balance?
No, we, we have not, we are not proposing the appropriation of any unassigned fund balance dollars.
For reserves.
In other words, we're not dipping into our reserves, we're not dipping into our reserves to cover our operating budget or capital.
But to budget a certain percentage of our budget to serve as our reserves and to have a balanced budget, would it not need to show up in the budget? Or are we not budgeting for reserves?
No, no, ma'am. I, I, I'm thinking you may be thinking of the annual comprehensive financial report where we do lay out fund balance, the five different categories and what's in them. What we do in this bu, I mean, what we do in the proposed budget is we talk about the sources of revenue in full and the expenditures that are going to be made and are being proposed in full, and those have to balance out.
So let me ask this. So our reserves are simply sitting in our unassigned fund balance, and we don't include that, like a 1.5% of our expenditures by policy?
We, we, we have, we are required by charter to set back between 1% and 5% of the general fund as a reserve. That was something put in many, many years ago. And we always put 1% aside in the budget for that. But that is, it's, it just, it's there.
In unassigned?
Actually, that would be committed. That would be in a category called committed, because the legislative body at one time approved of that, so it would have to be in what's called committed fund balance.
So either it's in unassigned fund balance, or it should show up here for us to be able to commit that money.
Actually, there's, there's five categories of unassigned fund balance. You got non-spendable, okay, which you can't touch. You got restricted, which somebody's put restriction on you, like by a grantor or something. You've got committed, which means it's gone before this legislative body. At some point, you put some rules in place so that that goes into there. For instance, not only that 1%, but 20% of the general fund goes into what's called a stabilization account. That's in committed fund balance, because that was approved by a legislative body. Then you have what's called assigned, which are by practices put into that category. And then you have unassigned fund balance, which it's essentially, it's available for use. Now, when we, we are projecting right now, ending this FY that we're currently in at right around 29 million in unassigned fund balance. But we're not having to use any of it in this budget that's proposed before you.
Ms. Parker, your five minutes are up. You can come back, go to your other council members.
It's just to clarify, because I really, I want this to not just be for me, but for the public to better understand our processes, right? So if we have a policy that says we need to budget 1%, put aside 1% of our budget, I want to be able, we can identify that and clarify that it's not in our budget, but it's in our funds under unassigned, our assigned fund balance. But can we just clarify that piece?
I think Mr. Evans just did. So we'll, we'll go to Mr. Smith, and if, if there's further clarity that he can provide, we will do so. Mr. Smith.
I had a lot of the same questions today, so I spent a half an hour trying to get clear on it. I think I'm there. The second part of this ordinance is providing the authority to reappropriate non-project-related encumbrances at the end of this FY into the next FY.
That is correct.
And that's a new part of this.
That is something we've started doing the last, the last proposed budget for the fiscal of the year that we're in now, FY '23. And it's in this proposed budget for the upcoming FY '24. We've put that language in there toward the, it's, it's in the back of the, not the back of, but it's after the numbers in the ordinance that you've got, the proposed budget ordinance, which basically, not basically, gives us the authority to move monies around at the end of the fiscal year to balance out the various funds. For instance, if we fell short in, I don't know, special events, that office could very well happen. But we had some extra in, I'll say Tom there, engineering department, not in the capital stuff, but in their operating. Maybe we could move it over there, because you got to balance your budget per state law. And, you know, one thing about the departments and funds, I'll tell you almost anything you want to know, but one, one thing I can tell you for sure is, none of them are going to be exactly where you thought they were at the time you set forth the proposed budget. You're going to be over on some, you're going to have less on some others. So you've got to balance that. And that's, that part of this ordinance, I think it's paragraph six, I think it is, gives us that authority, sir.
And so if we have surplus in revenues, well, let me, let me back, just to replay that back to you. At the end of this FY, between now and the end of the year, this is granting you authority to level load all of those to reflect all of the departmental budgets the way they originally budgeted. Is that fair?
Affirmative.
Okay. And now I forgot my second question.
I think you, I think you were talking about what's going to happen if, let's say there's excess.
Yeah, it rains $5 million more than we expected.
Then those automatically go into fund balance.
Unassigned.
Unassigned fund balance as it pertains to the general fund.
And we can only tap into those dollars if this body approves.
That's correct, yeah. We can't just, we can't just spend them.
That's right.
We have to come back to you.
So if revenues are, are more than we projected, that goes into our savings, and if we want to use those, this body will approve those.
Affirmative, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. I had one more question about the alternative response. I do think, you know, I would like to discuss that more in our legislative meeting. So I echo Councilman Parker's comments around data, specifically as it relates to the co-responder model to, to date. I remember, or at least maybe I, I read myself into the play, but I remember us discussing all of the options, voting to proceed with this option, but leaving the door open for the ability to be nimble and pivot more in a coast, a non-coresponder, alternative co-resp, alternative response only model. So that data, I think, would be very welcome to me. Not to belabor the point now, but Turn Up Knox does violence interruption now. Did they respond without a police officer?
Turn Up Knox does not respond to 911. Oh, I'm sorry. They're different.
Yeah, Ms. Middlebrook.
Violence interruption and alternative response are two different models, and so when they engage, they are not engaging with police officers, but it is not the same thing as alternative response. It's designed to do some very different things.
Two different things, but Turn Up Knox does respond without police officers.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And I would just add that Turn Up Knox did not exist a few years ago, and, and the city and Ms. Middlebrook in particular has helped them establish themselves and, and, you know, create a nonprofit from scratch, and CED has been really helpful in that. And that's, just takes a tremendous amount of, of work and capacity building. So it's not that you can just flip a switch and say, let's do this. It takes a lot of training because we want to do it right. And similar with alternative response, to my knowledge, there's no existing entity in the city of Knoxville or in the nearby area who is ready, willing, and able to do the work similar to, you know, what we've heard about in other cities. So standing that up is something that, you know, could conceivably be done, but it's not like.
Right.
Easy, and it's not something that, we, we've prioritized the, the violence interruption has been a higher priority.
Yeah, I'll just end by saying, I think they're both similar in the sense that we're trying something new, and we need, just my opinion is that we need to remain nimble enough to adapt to what we learned from the data and not feel restricted to whatever that is, the same way we weren't restricted to what we did before. We should remain nimble and use data to change, so, thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Roberto.
Thank you, Mayor. Director Evans, since we're talking with you right now, I, just, obviously, we're going to, council's going to have our legislative budget hearings on May 9th, so we'll get into more detail here, but just in general, how would you characterize the financial health of the city in this budget?
Just off the top of my head, I, I'd have to say financially sound. By that, I mean, I mean, yes, we're dealing with higher inflationary costs, but we've got sufficient unassigned fund balance and a total fund balance to deal with any unforeseen circumstances. And we didn't have to use any unassigned fund balance to, to propose a balanced budget. So no, we're in, we don't want to have, we don't have money falling all over the place, but we're in a financially sound position right now.
Okay, thank you. And then, you know, just to the extent you can, can you talk to us a little bit about, maybe like broad strokes about forecasting, projections, things that you're looking at in the future, maybe in particular with trends you're seeing from the revenue side, things like that? Can you give us a little bit of a, a general look ahead?
Well, there's about four or five things that we really got into as we were forecasting this that, that were key. One of them is inflation. I mean, that's no surprise to anybody here. You know, virtually all goods and services have gone up, rising personnel costs, pay and benefits, those go up every year. We also looked at the increase in pension unfunded liability that we have to pay, 2.35 million extra this coming FY. Got less grant money, about 41 million less, almost exactly, than we did last FY. And if you look at our capital, proposed capital budget, you'll see that it's less by about that exact amount, because we don't have that. On kind of the positive side, or not kind of, it is positive, we do have increased property tax revenue from where this body, you know, approved a tax increase of 36 and a half cents. And we've got increased sales tax revenue. I had written down here, right around 16.4 million more projected if you combine local option and state shared sales tax, if you go from this current FY into what we're thinking it's going to be in the proposed budget for '24. So those were the key things that we had to forecast. I mean, we forecast everything, you do a budget, but those were, those were primary drivers, sir.
And, and you have, and you've mentioned this, I think, in some answers to some earlier questions, but with regard to the economic stabilization fund, you've got that funded, the 20% that goes in, you know, by council resolution, but then also the 5% best, best practice.
That's correct. 20% in stabilization sound committed, the 5% goes into assigned best practices. We don't touch that, we don't, that's, that's not proposed in here.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Frost, I wanted to turn real quickly to you. You had sent an email to council members, just reminding us of the direction the charter gives us as to first reading, just for, you know, the folks at home. You know, can you just go over that real quickly with us? What is council to do per the charter with regard to first reading?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Section 901E is an echo of the charter. First sentence, the council shall pass the budget ordinance on first reading, and thereafter, the council shall hold public hearings on the proposed operating budget as well as the proposed, as well as the capital improvements budget, so on and so forth. But the gist is council is compelled by the charter to pass the budget on first reading.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember McKenzie.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow, just go back to the alternative response conversation. I know that we have not, to my knowledge, had an update on the co-responder unit as far as their data in the last probably eight to nine months. I think it would be good for us to be able to get an update on how that unit is going, the number of calls, those types of things, and then also just the cost.
Okay.
For us to, to be able to run that unit and their hours of operation, so we can take a more closer look at that versus alternative response, knowing that, as Councilmember Smith and Parker alluded, understanding that we should keep all, all options open as we look at mental health crisis, those types of things that are increasing.
Right.
And the types of calls that we're receiving. And so I think that would be good for council members to have that information, to kind of level set the conversations going forward.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I'll work with Chief Noel to see how fast we can gather that information for you. I think it's also important, as you all know, since you've been working on mental health issues, like, you know, the city can't do this alone. You know, we need to work with our county and state officials, since it's actually under their purview to provide for the public health, including mental health. We shouldn't let them off the hook of that obligation, you know? Councilmember Singh. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. McC, Councilmember McKenzie, did you have more? Sorry.
One more thing. I'd also like to know if, if we can get the number of calls where police have had to accompany mobile crisis unit on calls, if that's available, versus the co-responder unit.
Yeah, I think the mobile crisis unit is a little bit of a misnomer, you know? I don't know, we'll look into it, but that, my understanding is like they don't go with police barely at all, and it's not really, you know, instant, like a 911 call. It's like, but we'll, we'll confirm that. That's my understanding from the last time we asked. And, but I'll work with Chief Noel and Chief Sharp to gather that information for council.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Singh.
Thank you, Mayor. As you know, I'm a big supporter of the alternative response team. What I am curious about is, this question's for Ms. LaCania and Chief Noel. You guys were on a panel, and from what Ms. Connolly said, you were both very much in support of a model like this. Can you just comment on what, what you think might be a good way for us to move forward?
Ms. Middlebrook.
Yes, and I, I did participate in that panel, and I believe what I said on that panel is that I am open to exploring how we may be able to engage something like alternative response in the future. I do see value in the work. I also recognize that we have limited capacity in our city, and as we look at models, a lot of times, and, and part of, I think, where some of the delay has come from, and these are conversations that we have had with Hart, is there was some misunderstanding on each end, I believe, as to how the work was going forward. I thought that we had come to some more understanding about that, and we're looking to move forward, and I'm eager to continue to, those conversations about how we can potentially move forward in engaging similar work as we, you know, explore what our options are. At this point, we have, as American Cannon said, prioritized violence reduction as we have seen significant increases in violence in our community and have put our resources there. And, as Ms. Gill stated, in the participation in the sequential intercept mapping process with service providers who are engaging in this work at various levels. There was a lot of interest expressed in continuing to explore how to build out and better resource the co-responder model. And so we have been listening to service providers in the community around how to better engage. But I am, as everyone here has said, open to exploring all options and keeping all options on the table as we look at how to best serve our community.
So, thank you for that. I think this doesn't, this isn't an exact overlap with violence prevention. To me, what this model works on is our mental health issues, and as we've been using the police as social workers to make house calls, I think it would actually help the police department for us to have that. But Chief Noel, I'd love to hear your opinions on it.
Well, you know, as I said in the panel, you know, I really think working with the violence interrupters and Turn Up Knox has been very beneficial to us. I believe in the co-responder program. I'm absolutely committed to that. I'm committed to programs like law enforcement diversion. I'm committed to programs like law enforcement diversion. The other side of things, just the reality of it is, is that, you know, police and fire respond to a very high volume of calls to service. And any model that comes out of that is gonna require, you know, a lot of staffing. So I'm not, just like Director Middlebrook, I'm not opposed to anything. I'm open to working with anything. But the reality of it is, is that we do respond to a high volume of calls, not only police, but the fire department as well.
May I ask Ms. Connolly a question, if you're still here? Hi, I know we talked about this a couple of years ago, but please refresh my memory. The models that you looked at, were those models run by the police departments, the city, or nonprofits that were separate entities?
There's some of everything. And what we would be looking to do is engage with the city because, as Chief Noel is alluding to, in most models, the calls run through 911. So the city has to be involved. This is not something that can be done outside the structure of the city. So it has to involve, you know, the partnership with the city. So we would welcome that opportunity, and we feel like we've not been as well received as we would like, but we look forward to working in partnership.
Have you had a chance to have a conversation with Knox County? Because 911 is, covers both.
We talked to fire department, is that both Knox County and, no, it's just the city? We've talked, no.
Okay, so that's something that we should probably do.
If someone's that brave, yes.
Thank you for that information. And thank you for bringing this topic up. I just jumped on the bandwagon of this because we don't have this conversation often enough. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Parker?
Thank you, Mayor. I also had concerns about Section 6, which Councilmember Smith brought up and wanted to ask. You know, the public is very interested, I'm very interested, in our budgeting process and how we, through this process as city council people, can review the budget and, as allowed by charter, make potential changes. And the way I read Section 6, it seems like it would be possible for us to amend the budget, but then this would give the administration authority to essentially move that funding back to where, you know, the administration wants that funding to be after not spending the funding after, for a certain amount of time. Could anyone speak to whether this passage, Section 6, would allow that?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Can you ask it again, please?
If we amended the budget and, say, moved, you know, 50,000 from animal control to stormwater, would this language on page 359, under Section 6, allow the administration to, you know, not spend that 50,000 and then move it back to the previous fund?
Mr. Swanson, correct me if he thinks I'm incorrect here, but I don't think so because it has the statement in there within their respective funds, and stormwater is a special revenue fund. So in other words, you could move, you could move funds around like within the general fund, but you can't get into special revenue funds. So, not on that example. That's my understanding.
Okay, let me switch it up. What if we moved it from, you know, finance to public services?
Mr. Swanson may be able to add his two cents. If, Mr. Evans, go ahead.
And this is for, in other words, after the, after the, okay, this is the proposed budget ordinance for FY '24. After FY '24 is over, this has given us the ability to move funds around at that time as we start doing year-end closeout to balance out the funds. This would not open it up to moving it around right now before even the first reading of the budget or second reading is done. This is after the budget is approved, adopted, and then as we go through that year, and we get to the end of it, and we see, okay, we're short a little here, over a little there, we can fix it within the respective funds. That's always been my understanding.
And so, is there anything, you know, let's say, in engineering, we budget 8 million for engineering, but spending is at 10 million? You know, I'm trying to understand how you get to a scenario where at the end of the year, you need to balance the budget. Like, when are you allowed to go above and beyond what's been budgeted already?
Well, we don't go above and beyond what's in a particular fund. That's gotta be approved by this body by a budget amendment. But normally, like, let's take the general fund. That's usually where you got the most issues, and generally, they're small. Let's say, fire, Chief Sharp hit next year, he's a little bit over budget on, for something, or a myriad of things. And Chief Noel with KPD is, you know, they've got some additional money. At the end of the FY, as we're closing it out, got the audit going on, then we would balance it out that way. But that's for the, those are for the exceptions. They're always gonna be a little bit, but, you know, we keep an eye on it through the year, so there's not huge surprises at the end of it.
So, back to my question, if you don't mind. Would we be, within the general fund, if we move money around within the general fund, would the administration be able to, you know, not follow what council has voted on and not spend those dollars under a certain fund, but maintain the dollars in the general fund and move it to other spending priorities?
Yeah, I think I'm gonna have the law director try to field this, and then we'll, since five minutes have up, we'll go on to the next person who had their light on.
I think that really gets back to, and you can, you can amend the budget as we have discussed. For example, take $50,000 away from police department, give it to the fire department. But you can't say specifically how those funds are to be spent within that department.
Right.
So what you could do is take $50,000 away from the fire department, give $50,000 more to the police department. They would, they would be in those departments, and the department heads and the administration would decide whether or how to spend those funds. And if you came to the end of the year and you still had that $50,000 discrepancy, then the finance department would true up. If somebody's over budget by some amount, they would true up the funds there. I don't think it would accomplish what you're, what you're suggesting. I guess cynically, you could try to do that, but that would be a really poor way to go about it. A better way to go about it would be to appropriate the funds and put them in the, back in the department you want them in if you want, if you want to do something else. For example, if that amendment happened, then the administration throughout the year could propose an amendment to the budget again to ship those funds back. But if you don't, you don't. That's, that's your area of control.
Councilmember Fugit?
Thank you. Mr. Evans, just for citizen help and everything, when we talked about the money that is set aside by charter that has to go to, where does that show up in this book?
You won't find it here. We used, we, it used to be, years ago, that we would talk about the 1% and say, and it's set aside a reserve. I think you can look back to some old budgets and see that. And it was, it's kind of silly. It's got nothing to do with anything because we never used it, ever. And so what happens is, we are maintaining that 1% in our required reserves, just like we always are. But we report on those at, as part of the audit when they do the annual comprehensive financial report. That's where you find all that.
Thank you. I understand that. I was just trying to help clarify why citizens won't see anything about the reserve or what the charter says in this document. This document is only for the amount of money that we can spend this fiscal year. Correct?
What we believe is going to come in and what we propose going out.
Right. And so, we're just budgeting what we, based on the revenues that we know we can spend, whether they're assigned or unassigned, to actually make the government function, not necessarily have our savings account. We're not putting that on.
You're correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Thank you for that. And then, I think what I understood Councilwoman Parker asking, I would assume, based on my experience, that when budgets are trued up, it's really not significant amounts of money. So if it were, if council said, "We want to move $2 million somewhere," it couldn't just sit there and then come back at the end of the year to be trued up. That would have to take a budget amendment, I assume, to move money that significantly from one department to another. Is that correct?
That's correct. That doesn't happen. I'll just give you an example, real world. One of the only times I've ever seen revenue kind of significantly exceed expenditures, where we had some extra and stuff. If you remember, when the pandemic was about to hit, it was coming from other places in the world to the United States, and we got together and we thought, "We're not gonna make anything in some of these revenue areas." Well, we did, much to our surprise, we did. At the end of that, no, we didn't spend all that or reallocate it. It just goes into unassigned fund balance. That's where it goes.
Councilmember Smith?
Just to keep on this line for a minute. Using the two departments, well, let me ask this question first. In the, Section 6, it says respective funds. Is that, am I to interpret that as departments?
No, funds are different from departments.
No, sir, there's, there's different types. There's proprietary funds, there's special revenue funds, there's the general fund, I mean, there's various types that are set out in governmental accounting.
Okay, so the second question is, using your, the two departments earlier, if, if the special events overspent a million dollars this year, and engineering underspent a million dollars, where would this body see that before the true-up?
Well, you would see it. If it was a million dollars in, like, special events, first off, we're gonna see that coming a mile away, and if it's important enough, we're gonna have to come and.
Yeah, okay, $10,000. Sure, whatever the money, where would this body see the discrepancy?
Well, in that instance, you would see that in a budget amendment that would come to you. If it was something, let's take a million out of the picture and say, yeah, 1,000 or 2,000, it would not come before this body. That would just be done, that's what this is giving us.
That's what this is the handle, but what is?
The true-up, as Mr. Swanson said.
So the, my next question is, what is that threshold? Between a million and a thousand? What, is there a specific one?
There is not a specific.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Parker?
I just have one other question, and then I'm gonna try a motion. My last question is, before our public hearing, I'd really like to get all of the, an accounting of the capital expenditures that have been appropriated but not yet fully expended. Would that be possible to do, especially with our new fancy finance software that we've invested in?
Ms. Parker, we'll try to, we're recording that question, and we'll try to have some answers by Tuesday.
That would be awesome. And then, just the motion I wanted to make was that we go ahead and postpone the second reading of the budget ordinance and tax. And we'll, we'll get to the tax.
Ms. Parker, if I, it's been suggested to me by the law director that you all could vote on this, and then afterwards have a separate motion to postpone the second reading?
Oh, really? We're gonna close it, took the vote?
You shouldn't, you shouldn't postpone the second reading until you've passed the first reading.
Oh, I thought we would essentially be amending the AIS in front of us.
No, because you're not postponing the first reading. If, if, you know, I'll, I promise I'll call on you after this and see if you want to make that motion at that time.
Okay.
Is, there is a motion right now on the floor? Are there any further questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries, 8-1. Now, is there a motion? Let's see, following the last meeting, you all discussed the, your interest in possibly delaying the second reading by two weeks. So now would be the time to entertain a motion to allow that to happen and postpone the second reading to May 30th. Is there anyone who wishes to make such a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone the second reading to May 30th.
Okay, motion's made to postpone the second reading of the budget till May 30th. It's been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion to postpone carries. Now we'll move on to item 12B, and I will entertain a similar motion, assuming you guys pass 12B, to postpone the second reading to have them, you know, both A and B discussed at the same agenda. It seems to make sense. All right, 12B, please.
12B is an ordinance to levy a tax on all taxable properties, real, personal, and mixed, within the corporate limits of the city of Knoxville to provide sufficient revenues to fund the general fund and debt service fund operations and debt service obligations of the city of Knoxville for the fiscal period beginning July 1, 2023, and ending June 30, 2024.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Is there a motion to postpone the second reading of this until May 30th?
I'll make the motion to postpone till May 30th, the second reading, just to keep the two items together.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion to postpone the second reading of item 12B till May 30th has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
12C is an ordinance of the council of the city of Knoxville to amend Chapter 7.5, Article 1, Section 7 of the Knoxville City Code to clarify the responsibilities of the internal auditor.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, there's three people signed up for public forum. First is R. Bentley Marlowe. Mr. Marlowe, you have up to five minutes.
Hi, I'm Bentley Marlowe, 322 Douglas Avenue, Knoxville, 37921. I'm just here, I would like to continue to raise the issue that we are in the midst of a housing crisis. This past week, I listed a one-bedroom house for rent on Zillow, and within 48 hours, I was inundated with over 60-some-odd emails, phone calls. And by 72 hours, I had over a dozen pre-approved applications, paid for, submitted, and reviewed. I told everyone I would take them in the order of the approved applications, and I had an open house so everyone could have an opportunity to see it. I arrived exactly on time, and there was already over a dozen people waiting on me. It was incredible. I have never seen such desperation in a first-world country in my entire life. It very much felt like, when I visited Cambodia or other places in the third-world country, just how desperate people were for housing. I had a young couple that showed up with years' worth of bank statements, paycheck stubs, letters of recommendations from their neighbors, their church leaders, you name it. It's uncalled for. And, you know, I've been part of the developers' roundtable, I've been vocal here for a long time. It's, there's a lot of very simple things, like erasing the ward map that would go a long ways, ending a lot of the red tape, the micromanagement going on in stormwater, and plan and review. And, you know, what's really shocking is, I met with Cheryl Ball last week. I had an idea that came directly from the Missing Middle Report that we've spent money on, that we claim that we're involved in and engaged in. And I wanted to upzone a large lot that's non-conforming with the neighborhood that was forced to be large because of ward map issues. And so now it's this huge 10,200 or so square feet lot. I want to upzone it to RN4 so that I could get five dwelling units as a multifamily instead of one single house. And I went through the application process to go through the upzoning and was told by planning, MPC, whatever it's called these days, that I need to talk to Brian Berry. So I had a nice lengthy conversation with Brian and it's actually impossible, impossible for us to do a cottage courtyard development that was recommended and suggested by the missing middle under our current zoning rubrics. We looked at every which way to try to find some gray area, some wiggle room. It's impossible. Just flat out impossible. What could I do if I wanted increased density? I could upzone it. I could tear down the historic home that's there that I'm trying to save. I could cut down the two mature pecan trees that I'm trying to save. And then I could build this monstrosity of a single building that has five dwelling units that would be totally out of character. But that's the only way that I could get the five dwelling units on that property under our current zoning regulations. But then that seems to be counterintuitive with all of our historic preservation efforts, our tree canopy efforts. It's like you have a developer who lives in the neighborhood, who is trying his damnedest to improve that neighborhood and to at the same time honor the, the historical significance and historical character of that neighborhood to be true to our environmental efforts with our tree canopy and saving mature trees and trying to address our housing crisis. And it's impossible. And it's impossible because of regulations that have been imposed by this body, not necessarily you guys, but your previous members in your, the only way to fix it. And then literally, you know, Brian and I came to a conclusion that either I could rezone it. By rezoning it, all I could do is have two single family homes on this. Well, what about an ADU? Well, I could re, wait to rezone it, rebuild the historic house, change my driver's license address to say that it's my house so that I could then get a permit to do the ADU in the back. And then once that's complete, I could then rezone it to RN4, then come back and ask for permission to put a second single family home and that's it, three dwelling units. And about a year's worth of running around bureaucratic red tape. Or, as I said, look, the market's going to find a way. I'll just fix the house, change my address, get the permission to build an ADU and then put an eight-foot privacy fence around it. Catch me if you can, I'll stick to three tiny homes I want to put back there. They just want to have separate meters, but I will address housing. And he told me that he knows that that's going on all throughout the city. So are we in a housing crisis? Am I the only one that sees it? And are we going to do anything about it? Because it's going to require an ordinance change and we need this ordinance change today. Declare an emergency. I mean, I believe it's.
Mr. Marlowe, that's just five minutes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next person signed up to speak is Rick Roach. Mr. Roach, you have up to five minutes to address council.
Rick Roach, Knoxville. Man. Whoa. Mr. Marlowe really pointed out something that brought back a memory. The First Tennessee Bank and as part of a housing task force. We did our homework and I finally had a vice president of First Tennessee in this meeting say, Mr. Roach, yeah, we're in a housing crisis, affordable housing crisis right now here in Knoxville, Tennessee. This was seven years ago. And then we had a follow-up meeting. About four years ago. Same response. Nothing has changed. We've only done a new zoning thing called Recode and it makes it harder on just the average person and those who are already being hit hard by the financial circumstances out in the world makes it harder for them to access not just affordable housing, not just rental housing, but a home that they own. That means they can't access financial resources. Let's go east of downtown. Let's go east of downtown. What's the financial situation right now in far, as far as people having access to funds, financial institution so that they can, if they have a job, they have the resources to purchase a home? If that is what they desire? And, you know, the American dream says, buy your home. Right now, we're doing affordable housing and it's nothing but rental property. If you don't have the access to financial resources or if it's very hard, and let's, let's be true about this now. Let's be true about this. Right now, Knoxville, Knox County is the prime example of discriminatory practices in housing. Right now, financial institutions, okay? And it's going to come out. I, I think a lot of people already know it, but nothing's being done to alleviate it. Okay? So black folk in Knoxville, it's hard. Let's reference National Community Reinvestment Coalition, NCRC. You reference them and all the information that they have just on the East Tennessee market. Okay, financial institutions. Black folk are getting shut out. Shut down. Okay? And it's discriminatory practices. If you do, if you remove brick and mortar locations right now, if you remove brick and mortar locations from a community and people can't go and sit down and talk to a local banker, finance person and say, hey, we want to get this loan for our mortgage and we want to stay in East Knoxville. We want to continue to live in an area that we're used to. More than likely, it's not going to happen. Okay? It's not going to happen. That's the trend. That's what we're dealing with. And, you know, if you guys don't start speaking up and paying attention to the conditions that are out there in the world right now in Knoxville, Tennessee, in East Knoxville, Mechanicsville, Lonsdale, if you don't start paying attention, it's just going to be an investor's world. Okay? And investors don't give a damn. They don't. We, we know this. We see it every day. Okay? So we got to put a different model in place. And if you guys don't do it, yeah, you got your two terms, you're limited and you can do whatever you want to do. Okay? In those four years and eight years, if you get re-elected, that's fine. You go ahead and do that. Okay? But I'm going to be straight up with you. Keep away from me. I'm going to dog, I'm going to dog you out. I'm going to dog you out. And just tell people the way it is. And if they don't want to do anything, fine. But I'm going to tell the truth about you.
Thank you. Next person, last person who signed up to speak at public forum is Constance Everie. Ms. Everie, you have up to five minutes to address council.
Where do I begin, Knoxville? Where do I begin today? For Mariah and for everybody else here, Tommy Smith told a little truth tonight. He's right. We had a vote on heart. It came to the floor. It was around the same time that Seema was supposed to bring in $4 million from other resources that she vacated and Amelia had to be the courageous voice and bring back the original $4,000 to the agenda. But she's, he's right. Y'all voted on that and you shot it down and chose the alternative response program with the co-responder instead, which was a watered-down version of what we really asked for. Because let's be real, that's what you're really good at Knoxville, watering down versions. More importantly, performances. Because what I've sat here and watched tonight, if you watch a live feed in Knoxville, you would think this city is conducting business. But that ain't true at all. Because let's be real, Rick, you ain't got to bring in no national counsel. You can keep this data simple for Knoxville. We know for a fact that racism and white supremacy is a key part of the discrimination of housing in Knoxville, especially when you look at black communities. I am just blown away by the black faces of white supremacy who thought it was appropriate to let stolen black land be built with condominiums that start at $25, $100 a month in front of the black neighborhoods that they are removing and erasing right now and then had the audacity to name it after pioneer civil rights leaders of Yurley and Delaney. How more insane and psychotic, more importantly, sociopathic can you be? Like, be for real, like the Renee Kelsers and the Gwen Mackenzies and the La Kenya Middlebrooks and the Denzel Grants and the Charles Lomaxes and the Urban League. Hey, guess where Lois Philis, I mean Phyllis Nichols work at now? She left Urban League and she works for Randy Boy Enterprises now. Come on, y'all. Let's be for real what's going on in Knoxville. Hey, Tommy Smith, real quick, another knowledgeable tip for you. The reason why the violence interruption team turn up Knox don't need the police? Because they're deputies of the police, which by the way, is the only type of program I've been able to find in black America doing such violence interruption. So again, watered-down versions. So they're like the UTK. All they got to do is apprehend and then they pull up or the Knox County Sheriff pull up and then they formally charge them. That's why they don't need the police. They are the police, which that's a dangerous game y'all play because these boys really are out here shooting. But hey, let's get real. When I watch Charles Swanson try to question more content, how dare you, Charles Swanson? Well, you're sitting next to a mayor that you defend that has done homeless count teardowns, that has committed perjury and Anthony Thompson doing trial, Thomas, you don't know what we protesting for? That has taken bribes and other things of extortion for this baseball status she's dumping in our community right now. Who are you to judge character of anything whatsoever? Oh, that's white supremacy and racism speaking right now again? Exactly. And so this is why Knoxville, for everybody that came to this podium and begged on your knees and cried for help and mercy, the answer is voting. Vote Constance Everie and say it with your chest out loud. Y'all acting like this woman actually has straw hose. You got the leverage. You got the say-so. You got the juice. You have her ropes. She's the one that's going to need you in the long run. How dare you all come here and beg her for anything when you have the power, literally? I cannot say it enough. Vote for Constance Everie. That is a solution unless you want to keep up, put up with the nonsense and the black, white, the black faces of white supremacy who is destroying and literally killing us all. Justice for Lisa Edwards. Justice for Anthony Thompson Jr. Justice for Robert Bailey. Justice for every single person in this community who has been waiting and crying and asking and begging you all to give us justice while you're more concerned about how you going to help these rich white people like Randy Boy get more richer. I yield my time. Vote for me.
Councilmember, that concludes public forum. Without objection, this meeting is adjourned.